Welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday, December the 4th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And we will now open the Town Council meeting for Bowling Green, Virginia. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now take the roll call, Ms. Davis. Mr. Voight.
I am here.
Mr. Webb will be absent today. He called. Dr. Chanel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coyle.
Here.
Councilman Stork.
Here.
Councilman Hagaman.
Here.
We have six council persons present and one absent. We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, the minutes for last month's meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes for November?
I make a motion we approve the minutes for November.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to public comment. As I say every month, if you choose to speak, please come to the podium. State your name and your address, at which time you have three minutes to speak. You will address me, the mayor. And please know that the council cannot respond to your questions or your comments, but that we are listening and we are taking notes. So I will now open public comment. Would anyone like to speak?
I'll go first. If anybody want to go first, I'm okay. Hello, I'm Mike Bagat, relaxing at property owner. I thank you all council member, vice mayor, mayor, and all town of Bowling Green staff for serving town. My present today here for the tax bill, which is, this is the tax bill I have received, which is called, normally annually I get three bills from town, special district tax, real estate tax, and personal property. This year I have so far received these two, which is special district tax. Personal property, I got message it will be late and I'm okay. Question is, am I going to get real estate tax or not? Tomorrow is the deadline. Now, that's the first. Second, on the special district tax, it has gone up 144% for me on my property. I would like to kindly ask reason. I have emailed all councilmen and keep loop, so that way I won't have to repeat all questions. Also, town manager, I'm also in touch. She is very nice and I really appreciate that she is serving and she is clearing lots of other detail. And I thank her for providing quick service. This is the what I like to give you guys. The audience for special district was created in 2011 by our mayor, David Stroke. And here's the copy.
Yes, Mr. Ashcraft, thank you.
And if I may, if you guys may allow, I may need more than three minutes, please.
Our rules call for three minutes.
I appreciate if you do, if you not, you know. So my first thing is, this special district tax supposed to be constant, not variable. Second is town supposed to pay 27, 26% of this tax? And I mean, special district supposed to pay 26, 74% by town? Now, this is other thing is this special district tax collected by town is only used for the special district tax purpose, nothing else. So my question to you, that in 2023 audit I looked at and I asked town manager question, how much fund was collected for 29, I mean, 2023 audit? She replied 29,000 something. Don't quote me on, you know, exact figure. The thing I, second thing I asked, where is that fund held? It says general use fund. These funds only allow you, that's what that district tax audience in 2011 sign, it says it's supposed to go for only that reason. After then, it, if you have 20 years bound, my question to you as a council, why would tax go up? If it's 20 years, it's a fixed term. And after you refinance, then principal you financing at lower cost. So it should be lower than, you know, whatever originally intended. So it should not go up. My other, the answer I have received is that property value go up. If property value goes up, tax rate should go down. As like Caroline County, property value went up, but tax rate went down from 72 to 53 or 52%. So there is lot more discussion I need if somebody, if you want to create special audit on it, I'm willing to help myself. Also, I like council to dissolve this thing. This is not appropriate for only 301's district corridor paying this tax. And which will benefit town in future when they, you know, when there is any activity or development, it will hold down, will prosper. And only right now, certain owner, a property owner is paying. So I also like to request that you give me list of all property owner who's paying tax. How much are they paying? And what is contribution equal to that thing? And again, this is special district tax. Council has right to dissolve this and that's what it says on last page.
Yes, sir. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you. And one more thing, what should I do with my real estate bill? If you guys do not tell me, I don't have it and I will not pay. But I would, I would not like to pay any penalty on it. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak at this time?
Never mind, Jeff. Anne Marie Giles, Bowling Green Meadows.
It's an on?
Yeah, but it's in my face. I told my husband I wasn't going to speak, but I lied.
What's your address, please?
Pardon?
Address. Your address. Thank you.
Oh, mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
And town council. I want it on the record because I'll be back in January saying the same thing, I'm sure. But I would like the town council, the town manager, and anybody else involved to stop kicking the can down the road. I am tired of hearing that the problems that we have with the trees and bushes in the way so that we don't have to get out into traffic to see if there's traffic is a VDOT problem. If it is a VDOT problem, then there has to be somebody in this town that should be calling VDOT and saying, we have a few problems. Now, a bus driver called on one of the problems because he said, a lot of times if a bus driver calls and there's a problem, it'll be taken care of. If that's true, that's a sin. But this is my third time up here to address this problem. And I know I'll be back in January to address it again. And I hope at some point it's the last time that I'll be here because the problem will be solved. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Giles.
That's it for now. There was more, but next month.
We look forward to hearing from you then.
You do, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Would anyone else like to speak at this time? Hello, Ms. Cropper.
Pat Cropper, 251 North Main Street. Mayor, council members, I hope y'all had a good Thanksgiving. The water, oh my gosh. This poor town, the water is awful. But I'm gonna tell you, the water bill that I got this time, supposedly it was to go out the second week in November. I went back and looked at the minutes and that's what it stated. I didn't get mine until the 24th of November. Of course, y'all were not open on the next day and you were only open till noon, I believe, on the 26th. So I came and paid the water bill. I had to get a magnifying glass to look at the print on the water bill. The credibility, when I got it in the mail was, this has got to be a joke. There was no envelope with the bill. The font and the print was so small, a magnifying glass, you had to use it to read it myself. I was concerned when I saw that the cutoff date was December the 15th. If you go from November the 24th or 25th or 26th till December the 15th, that doesn't give people a whole lot of time to pay their water bill. I'm concerned about that. Why are we outsourcing the mailing? What is it costing for the mailing? I would like those numbers because I cannot find it in the financial packet that we get. I would also like to have the bottom line on the Harvest Festival. I cannot find where we made $4,000, $5,000, or we went in the hole, $3,000 or $5,000. If you point me to the right place in the budget, I'll look that up. I've looked at it and I can't find where the salaries come out of this amount. What does it cost for the porter pot? All of the, I'm looking for breakdown. But that's my history of doing financial services for over 30 some years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cropper. Would anyone else like to speak at this time? Going once, twice. We'll now close public comment. We will move on to member comments. Ms. Davis?
I do not have any.
Mr. Voight.
Well, I'll try to be quick. Okay, so first of all, thanks to those of you that did speak. I'm glad you spoke there. Now, as far as what you passed out, Mr. Bagat, I will, you know, take a look at it. Thanks for the homework. I'll probably try to follow up with you a little later about it. Don't want to speak out of turn right now regarding that. I guess I was asked by two constituents to basically corroborate one other thing that we just heard. I was getting some complaints about the water bill legibility, about it being small. And I did get a, there should be a return envelope in there. So passing that along. Going from there, you know, just want to announce again, we got the parade next week, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, 5:30. Get there early if you want to have a good spot. It's back to an evening parade again and should be pretty fun. Planning Commission hat, a couple of things there. We do have later on in the meeting, and I might have some things to say, or you all might have some questions that I can bounce back about, about that food truck ordinance we can discuss. And in addition to that, there is no planning commission meeting this month. That one was canceled, so that'll reconvene in January. And I want to put in your rolls head that we did extend my term till the end of this year. So we're going to have to have that discussion again in January as far as council representative on there for liaison. And that should be all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Chanel.
Yeah, I have a comment that starts with a question to the council. Anybody can give me this information. The empty lot down at the 301 207 overpass, is that within town limits? It is, that's what I understand. A citizen brought this up to me, that it has become a tractor trailer parking lot. And in fact, there is a truck parked there, the tractor part, which has obviously been wrecked because the right fender and bumper are all messed up and it's been there quite a while. There's also another car there, I believe it's an SUV, that is being worked on over several days. My question is, were the owners or operators of these vehicles given permission by the town to park there?
Dr. Chanel, very good point. So years ago, in a previous life on council, that was brought up and VDOT, who owns that land, it is within the town limits and it's a horrible looking entrance to our town.
It is indeed.
Because it looks like a junkyard. VDOT, we need, I'd like to ask the mayor to direct staff to have VDOT at our next council meeting because they took it up, if we asked them to last time, years ago. And it's not supposed to be a parking lot for tractor trailers. You know, at very minimum, it needs to be like a staging place for VDOT trucks or something, but it's not to look like a graveyard.
Right.
And they know that. They just don't enforce it because we don't cry loud enough. So I'd like to, we need to, we need to raise that to their attention. Yeah, because, you know, if you're entering our town from the south, what a crappy entrance.
We've improved the difference, the signs and all, you know, at the other end of Route 2, but somebody coming from that side, it's a pretty bad introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Chanel. Vice Mayor Coyle?
Nothing.
Councilman Stork?
Well, I typically have nothing, but I do have something.
Okay, go for it.
So I just feel a sense of responsibility to talk since my signature is on this 2011 ordinance. And I appreciate Mike Baggett coming tonight. This was brought to my attention a week and a half ago. We have a problem. We have a problem. And this new instance brings to the forefront of what a mess has occurred in the last, fill in the blank, eight years, six years, whatever. And first I want to say, no one on our current staff, save maybe two people at Public Works or in the maintenance department, Sean and Justin, no one on our staff was here before. So not pointing fingers. And our people that are here now are great people and they're trying to run a town and deal with a bunch of old problems. This is an old problem. I did not know, you know, I did not know that some years ago. So when I got off council in 2016, till three years ago, when I got back on council, evidently there was a refinancing of three loans that lumped the loan for the special tax district, for the water and sewer out there, in with two other notes. One of the reasons I ran and got back on council was because I was hearing from citizens on the 301 corridor, David, we haven't gotten a tax bill out here for the special tax district in a couple of years. Really? We haven't been billing you? We've got a problem. And we've been digging ourselves out of the problem for a couple of years now, but we, it just keep, things keep popping up. I want to, I've talked to our town manager and she is willing. But we need to, we need to get together with, and since I've known about this problem, there is no reason, anybody that understands the special tax district, the special tax district was created to finance a water and sewer program out there on this 301 corridor. And we did it in 2008, but it, you know, took 2011 to create that special tax district. And it was to repay a loan to put that infrastructure in. It wasn't a, it wasn't a new tax forever. It wasn't a new tax that had a rate tied to per 100. It was a, it was, for lack of a better word, it was a loan. I bought a house and I financed it for 20 years and my mortgage is the same price every year, right? So when my assessment goes up on my house on Mari Avenue, my mortgage does not go up. It stays the same. So our staff is juggling 15 balls in the air and now we've got 16. And I propose that we create a committee and I want to, and I'll be glad to help with it. I want to get some of our original property owners that were out there on that district. Because if any of you talk to any of those people out there, their bills have doubled this year. And we're going off incorrect information. We're going off information that we don't even have, right? So, I mean, our staff doesn't even have a file cabinet we can pull out and look in 2011 for the special tax district. Mr. Baggett, he didn't preface his talk by saying he owns the two motels out on the 301 corridor. That gentleman was one of the leaders of the group, the proponents of the group, to take on this burden and do this. And he's been a willing partner and a good partner and we need to jump on this right away. If not at the next meeting, maybe at the, at our planning retreat, we need to, we need to take this on because we've got a tax consequence we've thrown on people that may not be correct. So I want to thank Mike for bringing this to our attention. I've spoken, since I've learned about it, I've spoken to several other property owners out there, maybe you all have too. And it's the same issue across the board. So I want to, I want to, just want to touch on that and ask us to take that up. Ms. Giles, where are the trees you're talking about? Because I feel, I feel bad if y'all getting up speaking, nobody ever responds to you. Where are the trees pulling out that you're talking about? All over the place?
No. I had said at one of the meetings, I don't remember names. One of them is Milford and Martin. You coming down Martin, you have to get out into traffic. You have to get on Milford to see. The other one, that's a name I can never remember. Where Jim Day's house is, that street?
Virginia Avenue.
And it comes to a T? You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
I know, Chris.
Wayne and I pulled out one day and I said, back up. There was a car coming and they don't go 25. They don't go 25 at all.
Well, so.
Those are two, the one that the bus driver called on was the one on Chase Street. We have to pull out of Meadow and to see. But I didn't mention that because he had called on that one.
Well, maybe, I mean, it would be nice because I remember years ago on council, I appreciated when people called in and said, hey, my street light is out. Because we, you know, we don't, we don't all, I would appreciate a list of, your list to give to staff. And then, and then you have to realize, some of it's on VDOT right away. Some of it's people's trees that we can't just go and cut.
That's what I was being told, it's VDOT, it's VDOT. Why isn't anybody calling VDOT and saying we have some dangerous places?
Well, maybe, maybe we need to. So if you, if you would help us with a list, I think that'd be great. And then, Ms. Cropper, I'll just say, on the water, I hear you. I mean, I've got these readers now, I can't see, I can't, my phone on my phone, my boys make fun of me. So I get that. The envelope not being in there, that's ridiculous. The water is awful. I don't, I filter my water at my house because I don't, I don't like the taste of chlorine now. But a municipality has to put healthy levels of chlorine in there to be safe, right? I do take offense at some people, not you, but people run down our water here in town because of the gross alpha. Well, if you go right across the town line into the county, the wells are pulling out of the same water. They're drinking gross alpha just like we're drinking gross alpha. And, you know, I remember from years ago, the gross alpha, the limits there, I mean, no amount of radioactivity is good, but I mean, you get way more in a dental x-ray. So the water is horrible. I don't like the taste of it with the chlorine, but I don't think it's anything that's harmful. I drink, you know, I bathe in that gross alpha and I hope it doesn't hurt me at all. Bottom line on the Harvest Festival, and I hope you don't mind, I'm just, I feel so bad when y'all get up and talk and nobody responds to you. Bottom line on the Harvest Festival, we have a budget every year for the Harvest Festival. As far as how it shook out, the Harvest Festival is not designed to make money. Hopefully, we don't lose a lot of money, but it's designed to bring people to town. I would ask the mayor if we could look into, get an action, after action review.
We were supposed to have a report tonight, but our town manager is ill. So that is why we don't have a report tonight.
Awesome. So maybe we can follow up with that later. So that's all I have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she was.
Well, David, I talked to Jeffrey about the water bill because Wayne went into shock when we got it. He said, we got another tax bill because we had just finished paying town. Just, I mean, we got back that day. It didn't even say on it, water bill. We didn't even know what it was until I looked at it after I calmed him down. It needed, it needs a lot of change. Yes, it needs help.
Mr. Stork, is there anything else?
That's enough.
Okay, Mr. Hagaman.
Yeah, I'm just going to jump in, just a little. So I do know, and I thank you so much, Mr. Bagat, for coming. And I do know the town manager spoke at extensive length with you and your son. My challenge is this, before we, with all due respect, jump to committees and everybody runs around talking to each other, we really need to speak with our town manager to see what discussion she has had. When we do not do that, we tend to undermine what has been accomplished. I know items have been resolved with Mr. Bagat, but if we're constantly running out and saying, we're going to take care of it, we're going to take care of it, we have no idea of what's happened. The reason we have a town manager is so we are not undermining those decisions or the information that she has come up with. Absolutely, there's not much to glean from this piece of paper and there have been challenges, but that goes way back even before the last six years. This goes back before the last two town managers. So I think before we decide to start doing everything with that, we need to have a discussion with our town manager to see what other information and facts she has before we disseminate to our residents because then we're just giving them the wrong information.
Well, I'm not talking about disseminating anything, but there's a term called institutional knowledge.
Correct.
And this town has no institutional knowledge right now from the past. And this is a perfect example. So I've talked to the town manager and I've, I've talked to her about, we need to dig into this and she is in agreement. And there's been nothing done inappropriate or usurping the chain of command or protocol. So I'm just here to tell you, I was here, Ms. Davis was here and Dan Webb is here, who's not here tonight. I was here when this was created. So if I, if you want to know something about what happened in the past, I mean, typically you go back and you ask the people that were here, hey, what was the intent? What has happened? Because we've got a problem. And it's, it's, it's got, it's got to be found. We got to find out what the problem is if we're going to correct it. I don't know anybody that would agree that a double tax bill that should have been constant over the years is okay. tax bill that should have been constant over the years is okay. And it's, it's worth investigating. It's worth putting together a committee or whatever to assist our town manager.
I agree with you. All I'm saying is before we all run out and say, I'll take care of the problem for you, because we can't, I can't run to Mr. Magott and say, I'm going to take care of the problem for you. I'll read this and get back to you.
Who told you that someone told Mr. Baggett, I'm going to take care of the problem for you?
Several people have said that. We have seen an email he sent and several people have said that. With all due respect, Mr. Voight just said, I'll read this and get back to you. So all I'm saying is, that's great, but how do we get back to him if we don't have the fact? Once we have the facts, fine, we can speak with him. That's all I'm saying is get the understanding of whatever institutional knowledge we should have before we discuss this.
Well, how does that differ than what I just said about, we need to put a committee together?
All I'm saying is, before we even run into doing a committee, we need as a council to discuss it with our town manager.
Well, if the word committee worries you, I'll take that back. But what, it needs to be looked into.
Absolutely.
And, okay.
Is that, no, sir, not at this time. Mr. Hagaman?
Ms. Oliver, is there anything due for the town tomorrow as far as taxes? Any taxes due to the town tomorrow? The personal property? All right. Mike, what was the tax that you were thinking about was due tomorrow? Because the only thing I know that would be the county, is there?
Every year I do get real estate, special district. This is only for special district.
And that's for, that's the town of Bowling Green. All right, okay.
I do not have, so if anybody can bring now, I can bring check tomorrow. I don't have.
Okay.
I stopped by that town office two times and asked and they don't have bill.
Okay. Also, Ms. Cropper on the water, I've been here since 1990 and I drink the water every day. And I'm still here. I love the water. To me, the water tastes good. I make myst with it. I cook with it. I do everything with it. I haven't had no problem with it. As far as other billing and the billing outsourcing that we do, right now, our staff is so overwhelmed with everything that's got to be taken care of that wasn't taken care of in the last previous eight years with other managers in the town. So we're trying to catch up with audits. That's one reason why we're closed a couple of days of the week. You got to bear with us until we get these audits done, because the state's coming down on us to get it done. So that's top priority right now. As far as the envelope not being in, I'm not too sure, but I haven't even got my water bill yet. So I have no idea. I mean, I checked the mail today, the water bill still was there. My son lives over on Dorsey Lane. He called me the other night. He goes, Dad, I'm doing the bills. I ain't got my water bill yet. So there's some water bills that have been going out. Personal property taxes, like for my vehicle, we had problems with it, yeah, a couple years ago, it was coded for Caroline County. It wasn't coded for Bowling Green. And that was, I was told by the tax people over into county that they got a coded Bowling Green, but I still haven't got a personal property tax for my vehicle from the town of Bowling Green yet. I got it from the county and I've paid that, but I still don't have nothing from the town. I don't know if it's, I don't know if my mail's not coming or what it is because I don't have a water bill. I don't have the personal property tax on my own personal car. But just, I mean, we're having trouble with some of the billing things. Just bear with us. We're trying to work through it and also work through other things that were left far more important that we need to get taken care of. But thank you. Thanks all for coming.
We had, as your council voted to extend the deadline for the personal property taxes. We voted on that, I believe, last month. So we knew that that was going to go out late. I also have not received a water bill. So I understand. I'm going to try to end this on a lighter note. This past Saturday was the tree lighting ceremony in Bowling Green. I want people to know that the town does not pay for that. That is provided to this town at the generosity of businesses and of private citizens in this community. Businesses don't, a business donates the location. Several businesses pay for the tree and get the equipment there for the citizens to, that volunteer their time to decorate it. I bring this up because there were complaints on Facebook and I was thinking, this is ridiculous. This is a free gift given to this community. And for someone to complain about a beautiful, precious gift that was given to us, that makes our town so much nicer during the holiday season. Quite honestly, it's offensive to me. And I would like to thank the businesses and all of the citizens that were responsible for putting up our town Christmas tree. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. We will now move on to item number two. Caroline Reed's County Literacy Program. Mr. Michael Mudd is going to speak to us tonight, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction. Welcome, Mr. Mudd.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I do have some materials that I was going to pass out that may be helpful.
Mr. Ashcraft, could you get that for me, please?
It's a little wonky, but each person can get one of it. It's terrific. And I'll go ahead and get started while those materials come around your way. You're going to find, and, and again, thank you to the council and thank you, Mayor, for having us this evening. I am Michael Mudd. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Caroline County Public Schools. And I appreciate you allowing us to come and talk to you about Caroline Reed's, our literacy, our community-wide literacy campaign. In the packet, you're going to see at the very top, this keychain. We started our school year this year by providing this keychain as a symbol to our staff that went along with our theme, unlocking the keys to success for the year. And in unlocking the keys to success, we analyzed data and determined our focus areas. Literacy jumped out as an area of focus for us, for our school system. This focus also coincide, happens to coincide with the final year of state grant funding, referred to as all-in funding, that we've had, thank you, had available to us for the past few years. And these funds, a big portion of the funds are used to support literacy. And we've done that in many different ways in the school system, but we were able to also carve out a portion to help launch in this final year of funds, a community-wide literacy campaign. In focusing on literacy and wanting our students to be strong readers and writers and productive citizens, we recognize that it take, our teachers are working very hard and other staff around the division, and that we wish to also engage our community, our parents and, and greater community members in this effort and expanding our focus on literacy. So that's how we unlocked those keys to success and got our way to our literacy campaign. This long sheet of paper you have here is, are the, the ways that we are going to be engaging in our campaign that officially will kick off in 2026 in January. It unofficially kicks off right before the parade next week, which I'll talk about here in just a moment. But it will extend for the entire calendar year of 2026. And so I'll go ahead and, and go through, and I'm going to touch on specifically some of the direct connections to Bowling Green. First, the cruiser books. So coming, coming soon, the day of the parade, we are going to have our Caroline Cruiser, our retrofitted school bus that you may have seen, that shows up at events from time to time, is going to be outfitted with books. And there is a flyer on the back of the packet there that talks a little bit more about the Caroline Cruiser program. But we're going to be going out to four different locations that day, pre-parade, and encouraging parents and families to come out. Parents will have an opportunity to come up on the bus and, and select for their children some books that they can choose if they, if they celebrate the holidays, to give during the holidays, or if they wish to give to their children in another way. But the, the books that we will be offering are, will span ages from zero to all the way up through high school. But give parents an opportunity to kick off the holiday, kick, kick off the holidays and also our campaign by giving their children the gift of, of books. And so using those funds to help us in that way. We'll have four stops. The Bowling Green stop will be here at the Walgreens. We're going to have a stop in Ladysmith, Port Royal, one out in Dawn. And then we will be done in time for staff to then come and participate in the parade. So we're very excited about that day, December 13th, and looking forward to that. So that's our unofficial kickoff to the campaign. In January, we will, we are currently collecting data from, if any of you receive our, our mailers or emailers, we have a survey that's taking place right now. And we're asking parents, if, if you had an, had an option for a specific genre, what type of book genre would you be interested in? And what we're doing is we're gathering data to see what, what types of books would our adults in the community like to read, so that we can make this about more than just our students, but also encouraging our, our parents and anybody else in the community who'd like to participate. So we're going to be hosting throughout the year, book clubs. We're, as I mentioned, we're gathering that data now. And these book clubs will be geared towards the adults throughout the community. We are looking at various businesses and other locations where we'll be hosting these book clubs. And so once we've identified what books we'll be offering and genres, we will be getting more information out with dates and times and, and how you can get your book. So that'll be coming, coming soon. The next item on the list here is our bookstore cafe. As part of our accreditation in public schools in Virginia, one of the things that we work on at the, specific to, at the high school is supporting student experiences through student internships and also what we call school-based enterprise. School-based enterprise is essentially how we can hold a business in our schools, teaching students the skills necessary for how to run a business. And it's, that is part of our career and technical education programming, but open to all students. So one of the things we're looking to do is to, is to create a bookstore that would operate out of our high school. And that, that is part of a bigger vision, bigger school enterprise vision, where we will have a number of different businesses over time that are built, and again, not built in a, as an addition to the school, but integrated in the school. But this bookstore cafe is one of the current concepts we're developing as part of this literacy campaign. We have pitched this to a number of different groups, including our students. The high school students are super excited about this possibility. And all of our entrepreneur and enterprise opportunities that are, will be coming their way now and into the future. The next item, I'll spend a little bit more time on, the Main Street kickoff. I joined Dr. Calverick earlier this week with the Main Street Business Association in this room, where we talked about the literacy campaign and did so in a way to, to garner interest, to determine how they may be interested in supporting. One of the things that we would like to do is have our true official kickoff, which will be family and child-friendly, take place in February. February 7th, I believe, is the date, which happens to be Ice Cream for Breakfast Day, and we knew that Gibson's would be open. So we wanted to coincide with something that we, we knew might, might be an additional draw into town that day. But looking to bring literacy activities and a focus on literacy right onto Main Street here in town. We had a lot of, of great thoughts and ideas from the folks that we met with earlier this week. And I believe 100% of the folks that were in the room wanted to be part of this experience. So with our grant funds, we'll be able to provide the businesses with all the materials. Our only ask is that they would help host and be a landing spot for these activities to take place. We will help to, we will work with those participating to create a map for families. And we'll have a number of different ways of drawing our families into town that day for a few hours for a focus on literacy and promoting the businesses here in town. We are working with a consultant who has done this type of work. She has done community literacy campaigns before. She is currently in the, kind of the rural part of Virginia Beach. Punggol is where she is and has done this type of work in that area. She is very familiar with these types of activities, the adult book clubs, and a number of different ways of engaging. She came to the Harvest Festival earlier this, in October, really to just to get a feel for Caroline County and the town. She engaged with some of the, some of the folks that were, the businesses, talked to them a little bit about, you know, what draws folks to their businesses. And then she's used that to help design some of the, the ideas even further. She will be coming next week and Dr. Calverick and I will be taking her around. She'll be, be meeting some of the folks who indicated they were interested to help start developing this idea even further. We will have student volunteers and staff volunteers will be part of that day. But it should be a really great, positive, high-energy event, taking right, taking place right here in town, but designed to really promote and kick off this literacy campaign officially for our students and families. Right after that and right below on your sheet there, you'll see a charity challenge that will, that will then go right into an experience in our schools where we will provide reading incentives to students. But instead of receiving and focusing on trinkets as an incentive for reading, there will be incentives by meeting certain goals that will then promote student choice and various donations to selected charities in the community. Again, another brainchild of our consultant who has done this type of work in motivating students to read in a way by, through service and by giving back to others. So we're really excited about that. We've not done that type of reading incentive before. So we're very excited to be, be hosting something like that in our schools. That'll take place in all of our schools and will also include author visits. That will then take us up to spring break. And after spring break, we're going to be promoting our summer reading. Summer reading experiences, we're going to be working with our public libraries, but looking to also open our schools and school libraries in the summer, hosting summer literacy activities and engaging our students and families in that way. And finally, the last item on the list, in August, as we come back to school, each level, elementary, middle and high, will have a signature literacy project that they'll be working on. At elementary, we're going to be working to, work to have students write and publish books. At middle school, we have a, a reading challenge, a kind of a competition-based challenge that we're working on and encouraging what we, what Mr. Just is calling one book, all eagles. And then at the high school, through our academies, we are working on a one, one book, one academy model that'll culminate with project-based learning that will align with the selected book for the academy and culminate with a field trip experience for the students. So lots of different things that we're doing to promote literacy, to get our community involved in promoting the love of literacy and encouraging this for our students. And not on this list, but circling back next December, we will do the Caroline Cruiser book bus again, one, one more time, as we round out our literacy campaign for 2026. So I appreciate, again, your time. We, because of the connection directly to Bowling Green, we did reach out to see if we'd be interested in having me come tonight to talk to you more about it. Again, businesses, business folks were very excited about this, particularly the Main Street event. But we're really excited for Caroline County and, and glad to be welcomed into the town and being part of it in that way. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from council? I do have a question. We received, or at least I received, an email earlier this week from the Dolly Parton program.
Yes.
Where they give a book a month to children.
Yes.
And they were asking, do you work with such organizations like that?
So I'm familiar with that from my former role in another division where we did engage with the Dolly Parton Literacy Library and Program. And we are moving forward and engaging in that in Caroline County. We don't currently, but that is something that we are looking into moving forward. Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Mudd, thank you for being with us.
Again, thank you so much for the time tonight. We really appreciate it.
Moving on to item number three, we have the town manager's report. Moving on to item number three, we have the Town Manager's Report. I'm sure that all of you have read it. Are there any questions from council at this time? Mr. Ashcraft would be more than happy to answer any questions for you.
Madam Mayor and members of council, thank you for the opportunity. If I could take you to page two of, of the report at the top, in light of the discussion that's happened earlier regarding certain properties and bushes and limbs and things, I wanted to just let you know that the Town Manager has directed staff to be looking at those kind of things. I don't think we have touched on the three addresses that, that was reported this evening, and we'll certainly look at those. But if you look to see, there were six code enforcement letters that have been sent out, and we haven't been in a confrontational mode with any property owner. It's more of a, of a notice, and some of those matters have been taken care of. And to be truthful with you, the cold weather tends to take care of some of it as well. But just to let you know that we're aware that this is a problem, and we are in contact with VDOT. So if there's something they don't move on, then we will let you know. But right now, every time we do make a call, they are aware of it. But the three that have been reported this evening might be more severe than, than I'm aware of, so we will continue that, that communication. So thank you for allowing me to, to say that.
One of the things that, staff does not have preemptive enforcement powers.
That's correct.
The Town Manager and I have spoken about that. And the way things are set up right now, before staff can act on any violation in town, it has to be reported to them, has to be reported to them in a proper fashion via an email or written letter to the Town Manager with the address clearly written where the violation is alleged to be taking place. They cannot, staff cannot on their own just go out and say, oh, that grass is too tall, it's a violation, because this council has not given staff those preemptive powers. It's one of the things I would like to speak at, speak toward when we have our retreat, because this is, in my opinion, has been problematic, and it has kept, has kept our staff from being able to just go out and do what they need to do. So hopefully that clears some things up. Yes, Mr. Hagaman?
Another one you need to look at, Percy, is when you're going down Anderson Avenue, like going to Food Lion, if you look right, that big sycamore tree, the branches are in the way, you gotta pull out on Broadus Avenue, kind of see what's coming from Walgreens area down. That's another problem area. As far as what you were just talking about, Madam Mayor, there was a letter, and it got posted on Facebook, and it was for Cynthia, Cynthia Fields. What was wrong with her property? I didn't see anything wrong with it. Somebody made a complaint about it, but why look at other properties in this town that are, I mean, if they're going to complain about something on Main Street with Cynthia Fields, and hers is well addressed, we need to do something with other properties in the town that are horrible and get complaints about all the time. Even some businesses in town are horrible. There are junkyards on the corner as you're coming into our town. That car dealership, I mean, it's trash. And we're worried about junk cars down on the South Main Street, but that place has got all kinds of trash there. They're, they're still fixing their cars underneath the overhang. I don't think that's right. They shouldn't be repairing cars on that corner underneath an overhang that's not a closed garage. Our washing the cars on the Broadus and Main Street side, where all the old rags and the vacuum cleaners and everything, it's just a junk hole. And it's, it's, I mean, you're trying to beautify a town, and some of the members here, one, one didn't want their salary, they wanted to beautify town, but then we have that stuff on both ends. So I don't know what, what's getting done about it. Nothing, and I just, it's, it's bad.
Our Town Manager did speak with Mrs. Fields. I went to her home and, and looked her.
Did you see anything wrong? I went up there and looked at it, and I didn't see a thing wrong with the place of the guy.
There was nothing wrong with her property. The Town Manager came and told her that she was completely in compliance. But again, these are issues that we have to let staff take care of. We walk a fine line when we intervene. We have to be available to our citizens. That's why they elect us. They didn't elect the staff. Staff works for us. They work for you, this council. So the citizens do have a right to come and speak to us. That being said, we can't, it is not in our best interest as a council to jump in and say, okay, we're going to fix this, or we're going to do this. It is your place to listen, to take notes, and let the citizens know that you will be in touch with the staff so that we can follow through with this in a correct fashion. This goes back to, I believe, some of what Vice Mayor Coyle was talking about in undermining our staff. At the same time, we are elected officials, and we are not hiding from our citizens. I know I don't. They come to my home, they call my home. Ms. Fields called my home. And I didn't have a problem with that. That's why I ran for this position. So that being said, we can move on. Are there any other questions?
With the Ms. Fields thing, apparently somebody had to place a formal complaint.
Correct.
I think before we jumped the gun and have staff write a letter to do it, maybe somebody should, staff should go by and take a look at it and see if there's really, it could have been just an irate neighbor for some reason, because she didn't like something that happened, and she complained, and it went all over Facebook. I just, I don't think that's right. I mean, if we're going to send a letter, I think we should send somebody out there. I know we were short on staff and doing things, but before we blast them with a letter about saying they're not compliant, maybe somebody from town needs to look at it first and see before, well, no, we don't really need to send them a letter. There's something else going on.
Is it how it's done? Somebody reports you?
Yes, it has to be a formal complaint.
It has to have a formal complaint before anyone.
No, it's a formal complaint by somebody in town, makes a formal complaint about your property, and then the town sends a letter to tell them to fix it. And, but I think on Ms. Fields, somebody should have looked at that, and somebody should look at all of them before we send out a letter.
I, I agree, but we will discuss that at our retreat. Put that on your list of things to talk about. Are there any other questions to Mr. Ashcraft? All right. Thank you, sir. We will move on to our utilities report. Mr. Silas, do you, would you like to come speak to us at this time?
I would. Harris, everybody tonight?
Very well, thank you.
So for the month of October, everything was pretty quiet. I just want to go ahead and address the question from last time of the discrepancy in the data, where the dip was in the graph. It actually appeared here, too. It's a discrepancy, and we will make sure that error is not, the, the flow was actually steady. It was, it should have been, it should be a straight line. I went back through the data and I combed it. There's, that should not exist. It's an error. It's, it's an anomaly. We'll make sure that's correct going forward. Outside of that, for water, still dosing effective levels of chlorine, wastewater, temperatures are colder, biological activity usually slows down, but the numbers are great. So the, the plant is very resilient. Outside of that, everything has been pretty, pretty quiet. Does anybody have any questions?
How are the oils and everything looking, fog and all that?
The, so the way that we can decipher whether or not it is making impact on the plant is we look at the foam on the surface, and it's very minimal.
Does that change much going into the colder months versus?
Usually gets worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually it gets, because you have a little bit of treatment of the fog in the lift stations, but that was addressed a while back with blowers, and that, you know, that seems to have helped quite a bit. So we don't, we don't, we hardly notice any foam at all.
Okay, cool.
So it, yes, to answer your question, biological activity slows down, usually have more grease, more unsightly foam, and it does not exist right now.
Jamie, when, what is the status of our drying beds? I know that we had agreed that we would replace a few of them and then replace some more later. How are we in that process?
I know that there's been discussion with DEQ for getting the monies allotted and such. So we're just waiting, waiting for all that to move forward in terms of what is going on with the, who's moving forward with right now. I don't have that information right in front of me. I can get back with that. So I don't, I don't have the answer for that right now.
That's all right. I'm just curious. Thank you. Have a lovely evening. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, you too.
Next on the agenda, item number five, Public Works Report, and Mr. Sean Fortune will come forward. We have his report in front of us. Are there any questions to Mr. Fortune at this time?
None?
Hold on.
All right. And to answer the question, ma'am, at Virginia, you know, we, we did, we did turn that back.
Oh, you have turned it back?
I turned it back a week after you came in.
Oh.
But we, see, everybody goes, we need this and that done. We got a three-man band, and that's all we have now. Well, I'm, I'm dead serious, and I give the town a lot of free time now. I'm on salary. I'm giving a lot of free time, doing stuff after hours. And that's just how it is. I mean, we don't, we just don't really have enough staff to get out and do everything. We're back behind on things now, because we are, we actually helping people out with water leaks at the houses. We have to monitor that. Mr. Persis can tell you, I spend two hours in the morning sometimes just doing it and checking, and we take notices out to the customers and everything now to let them know they have water leaks. So it takes up a lot of our time doing that. And then I have to, I have to send my guys out and check it to make sure it's not leaking in the meter box. So sometimes we have 20 houses we have to go to. So you figure 20 houses you got to go to, then we don't got to open the meter boxes up now. We have to go and dig them out, and you spend two, three hours just doing it. So, I mean, just not enough staff to keep up with all, everything we have to do. But we keep it moving, so.
You do a fine job.
Yes, you did, y'all.
And we are very appreciative.
Thank you. But any, you know, any issues come up, we try to take, you know, go out and, and to answer, Randy, we did go out and look at those properties. So if they got a notice, we went out and looked at them. And to be honest with you, I'll say it right here, one of the properties was repaired within one day, and when I went back out, and it was fixed. So had three branches hanging over the sidewalk, and it was fixed. So that's all I'm saying.
Very good, Mr. Roy.
No, I'm not here.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Item number six on the agenda is the Finance and Treasures Report. Ms. Tolliver is here to speak with us. I hope that you all have looked over her submission. And are there any questions from this council at this time?
I did provide an extra revenue for the general fund for you guys, so you weren't alarmed. We have to run this report for you guys before the end of the month, so I just provided it as of the actual day of the end of the month for November.
Thank you.
So I, one question.
Go ahead.
So I had a couple of people ask me about getting a real estate bill when it should have gone to their mortgage company. And did it go to the mortgage company? And they just got a?
Yes.
Okay. Because, and, and I personally, I got two real estate bills to my house, and I just want to make sure it did go to the mortgage.
Yes, they did go. And that's, you'll, when you get the December report, you'll see all of those coming in. This whole beginning of this week has been all of those coming in, and we've been putting all of those payments in. Check by check.
To the 301 corridor special tax district, could there, if, if Mr. Begat has not gotten his normal real estate, not the special tax district, but the normal real estate, could those two have been lumped together?
No.
No? Okay. So his will be coming, I guess, or?
So based off of the history, from what I've seen, and you spoke about this as well, the history is iffy.
Yeah.
That there was only one bill that went out for real estate, if you have the normal real estate, and then there's a 301 special tax district.
Right.
Anything else, as mentioned before, the Town Manager and I, Davenport, we're all looking into that to try to get that figured out already.
Good, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Merry Christmas, Ms. Tolliver.
Thank you.
Have a lovely day. Next on the agenda is the Bowling Green Police Department report. Mr. Justin Cecil, Chief Cecil, are there any questions for him?
I'd like to say something, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Hagaman.
Justin, you and your staff are excellent. I've had a couple incidents at my store. We knew we were having problems there. We put up cameras in the parking lot, we put up cameras in the store. We've caught a shoplifter, and over the summer, somebody stole a bunch of my red cones out back three months, but they had a, they had a description of the car, because our camera showed it, couldn't, didn't have the license plate. They were adamant, they kept looking for the vehicle. They found a vehicle washing clothes at the laundromat the other night. So we got our cones back, plus we got some people barred from the property. So, I mean, that was probably three months ago when we did that report, and they, but they didn't let go. They had the description in their dashboard, they knew it, they found them, they got them, and we took care of it. So I want to thank Justin and his police department for helping us with what's going on at the store. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Mr. Roy?
I'm going to continue the same praise stuff, you know, not, maybe it's impactful, but, you know, all the events lately, the, the tree ceremony, the Halloween, everything, Harvest Fest, you know, you guys really do step up, and you guys patrol your back and forth, you're keeping your eyes on everything. And, you know, there was, they were controlling traffic while, while we were singing carols during the tree, like, you know, there's, he got somebody just down quarter mile past us. It was, thanks for being out there taking care of everything.
Well, we got the Christmas parade coming, so get ready.
I've got one more question for you, Justin. What time are we closing down the, the street? I've been asked that twice today. What time is the street going to be closed for the parade?
So we're closing Mari at four, okay? And, but we're going to keep Main Street flowing until about 4:45. The parade will start at 5:30, so between 4:45 and 5, we'll get Main Street clear. So.
Can I ask another one?
Go ahead.
Is, is the same layout as, as we've had a few times?
Same as last year.
So Mari and White Street, anything going on down South Main?
Only trucks that can't come on Mari, low boys, and I'm only aware of one or two right now.
All right, so that, that's pretty normal. Okay, thanks.
Merry Christmas, Chief Cecil. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before, I was hoping to just jump in really briefly before you conclude the staff reports, just wanted to add one item, if that's okay with Mayor Council. Jeff and I have been working with county staff to start updating the town's ordinances. The first, we're, we're taking it in order, so we're working on Chapter Two Administration of Government right now. We are going through it, making some changes. We've had discussions with county staff, and we will likely have something before Town Council to vote on, and it's May next month. Just wanted to provide you all an update later, that we are working on it, and you should have something before you next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to unfinished business. I don't see that we have any, or is there any that the staff or council would like Okay, we will move on to new business. Item number eight, we have the town calendar adoption. We have every year basically adopted the Commonwealth of Virginia's holiday calendar, and that has been proposed again. The staff support for adopting this calendar is respectfully requested so that they may pro- proceed with official implementation for 2026.
I'm going to break you for a real quick second here. You're good.
Thank you. In order for this to take place, I would need a motion from this council.
So, moved.
I have a, a motion from Councilman Voight. Is there a second? Second from Councilperson Hagaman, are there any discussion items here? We'll move on to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote passes, all six members. Next item on the agenda, the building maintenance code adoption, and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Danielle at this moment.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just for a matter of clarification, the agenda item does reference it as being adoption of the maintenance code. That is a clerical error, that is not correct. It's actually just adoption, as you'll see in your packet, it's an ordinance to add Part Two to the currently existing code. Right now, the town has Part One, and so we're just adding Part Two. If you're wondering what that means, it's really just relating to construction, renovating, and rehabilitation. So, Part One really just focuses on, it's the construction codes, right? So, it's focusing on construction of new buildings and structures, allows the building official to go into properties, make sure everything is built to code. Part Two focuses on rehabilitating and renovating those existing buildings, and it kind of excises an alternative to Part One. So, Part One deals with construction, but it also deals with renovation. Part Two is an alternative that also deals with renovation and rehabilitation. So, it's just clarifying, making it clear that the building official will have access to Part One and Part Two, but it is not touching at all on the maintenance code. So, to make that clear, that's a completely separate discussion. And I'm happy to answer. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from this council?
With how you're kind of like changing your description of this, what will be the way that we would phrase the motion then to adopt it?
I think you can just have a motion to adopt the ordinance, you can just read the title, actually. I think that would, that would handle it. I think that's, I think that's pretty clear.
Okay.
Actually, you know what? That's a good point. It does not reference Part Two. So, I think the motion can just say to adopt the ordinance that's included in the packet to include, including Part Two of the USBC into the town's currently existing ordinance.
Okay, but because you said that, I can say so moved.
Okay, that works for me.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion from Councilman Voight, a second from Councilman Hagaman. Is there any further discussion from this council? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to item number 10, and that's the mobile vending ordinance. Mr. Smith, I will let you take this over for the moment, and I will jump in in a little bit.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as you know, over the past couple of months, town staff and planning commission have been working to create amendments for the zoning ordinance that are needed to add temporary vendor use for mobile vending units. So, we had a public hearing, planning commission last month, we received no comments, and at this point, we are asking for the authorization of a public hearing for this proposed ordinance, which is in your packet, for the proposed ordinance amendments to the town council, for a town council meeting on January 8th. So, to reiterate, we're requesting a public hearing on that date.
Are there any questions from council at this moment? I have some comments, but I want to hear from you first.
Just two little things. In the ordinance itself, I think this may have been fixed, but there's two typos.
I believe so. I had.
Section A and six under 1018, and then 1020.
Yes, those, those will be fixed. Ahead of the public hearing.
Cool. And then the only question I had is, the vendors are permitted on private property, they will not be permitted curbside?
That is correct.
Okay.
I, when I moved to this town, my children were small, and you're laughing at me, it's true. They were very young, and we had an ice cream truck that used to come to town. This ordinance does not allow for the good humor man to come through your local neighborhood. I would like to have that, I personally would like to see that be an option to be added, and when I spoke to Councilman Webb earlier today, I asked what his opinion was on that, and he gave me permission to speak on his behalf, that he also would be in favor of allowing an ice cream truck to be able to go through the neighborhoods. So, I don't know how we do that, if we send this back to the planning commission, if that's something council wants to do, or if we go ahead and have our public hearing next month and then look at making any changes. If we do that, then we have to have another public hearing. If it goes back to planning commission, they have to have another public hearing. Either way, if this change is adopted, there will be a second public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Voight.
Okay, yeah, I.
You're on planning commission.
Yeah, well, a couple of things, and then I want to ask you a question. So, first of all, regarding that, that did get, turn the volume up, that was talked about a little bit. The, the major purpose of the ordinance thing was to define where on private property it would be allowed. And there was discussion of, you know, residential side, there's, you know, business public, which can, with permission, actually still happen under this. But, yeah, the stuff on the streets was not. We did discuss, you know, the good humor guy, and I'll get back to that in a second. Let me finish with, with the other, because we also talked about churches, and we, we didn't go to church because they're, you know, residential, and we didn't want to have every residential, you know, having a, you know, food vendor all the time in there. However, that is still allowable through the special event process. So, you know, a church that's doing a special event can go through that process to have a food truck and event and anything, and anybody can, you know, file for one of those, but for, like, you know, regular business use, you know, this aspect was there. As far as changing this ordinance in another public hearing, we kind of, we're advised kind of both ways over the other things, so let me draw attention to another aspect of this, of which I think we can, you know, probably discuss more at a later time. But right now, it's, the way it's written on here is up to three days in a row, 10 days in a month. Okay? And we had kind of gone a couple of different directions with that over time. The very first time was five days, and then that got raised to 10. I've, I've actually gotten some feedback in the time since that to maybe actually lower that again. But my, my question, you know, for the attorney is, you know, generally with having to go back to public hearing, you know, my understanding is you have to do another public hearing when it becomes more restrictive. But in, in the case of something like this, which direction is actually the one that would be considered more restrictive?
Well, I mean, typically, there is a need for another hearing when it's a use that becomes more intense. So, I'm not sure that that necessarily is applicable here. Before you is the request to schedule a public hearing, and so if council is interested in entertaining the ordinance as presented, I think council has a public hearing, gets public input, has a discussion, and decides what it wants to do, whether to adopt it as is, to make amendments to it, or to remand it back to the planning commission. I think that, I think that is the posture that the council is in at this moment.
So, move on to the public hearing next month?
Yes, that.
You're fine.
That is, yes, if the council is interested in having the public hearing, decides what it wants to. There we go. If council wants to entertain this ordinance as presented, yes, the next step is to have a public hearing and get input and decide how you want to proceed after that.
I'd be happy to go that route, get the public input.
So, the current, which all have put the planning commission has proposed, does it say no mobile ice cream trucks?
It doesn't define those specifically, but, I mean, you'd, you'd speak to it better than me.
I, I'm not sure that this speaks to it or not. I, I just wasn't really involved in the discussions to, to speak in detail to it, so I'm not sure that this definition prohibits it, but I think that, again, depends on the intent of what the planning commission was attempting to.
Yeah, the intent was not to police that type of thing, but.
I think we just go to the public hearing and let it hash out there. Are they going to be able to do this, like these food trucks come in when other businesses are shut down that provide food in town? I mean, is it fair to the corner store to have a sandwich truck come in when the corner store is open?
That's kind of.
Or the good humor truck coming through and selling ice cream when Gibson's is open? I'd.
There's, there's competitive stuff in there of not allowing, but that, that's some stuff that I think that we could massage a little more later, but the short answer is, is yes. The longer answer is, we can discuss it more after the public hearing.
So, at this time, would this council like to make a motion to adopt this?
You're just scheduling the public.
To, to schedule the public hearing, yeah, to adopt this, to move on to the public hearing.
I move that we authorize the public hearing on January 8th. Is that the date?
Yeah. So, I have a motion from Councilman Stork, is there a second?
Sure, yes.
Okay, second from Councilman Voight, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We will have a public hearing next. Informational items, do we have any? I don't think so. Oh, we do. We have Christmas and Toyland, and we have the Christmas parade. Jeff, are you involved with the parade this year?
I believe I was asked to do sound again.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the parade starts at 5:30. It will be on Main Street, and we look forward to having all of you there, and the Christmas and Toyland is set at Town Hall afterward.
Yes.
All right. And then you can bring your little kiddies back here to Town Hall at the end. Is there any other information that this council would like to impart to the public? Very good. We'll move on to public comment. Again, you have three minutes to speak. Please give your name and address and direct your questions or comments to me, and council will not respond to you as you speak. We will now open public comment. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward. Going once, going twice. We will now close public comment. We will go on to member comments, final member comments, Ms. Davis? Mr. Voight? Mr. Chenault? Vice Mayor Coyle? Mr. Stork?
Thank you.
Mr. Hagaman?
Not at this time.
I have a member comment. Merry Christmas. I hope all of you have a wonderful holiday season.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adjourn the meeting tonight?
I'll second that one.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Good night.